Welcome to this candidate forum for the Athens City Council at-large race. This event is being hosted by our organization and the City of Athens Government Channel. The candidates participating tonight are Sarah Grace, Damon Crane, Micah McCary, Iris Virgie, and Ben Ziff. Three of these five candidates will be elected to Athens City Council at-large seats. On your ballot, voters may cast votes for up to three of these candidates. We appreciate these candidates for making the time to participate tonight, and we hope this session provides you voters with information for this upcoming election. Please make sure you have a voting plan in place for this November's election. The last day to register to vote is October 4th. Early voting starts on October 5th at the Board of Elections Office on Court Street. If you want to vote by mail, you must submit a written absentee ballot request form, and then absentee ballots will start being mailed on October 5th. Election Day is Tuesday, November 2nd, and you can verify your polling place by contacting the Board of Elections Office. In addition to these candidate events, our league publishes a voter guide in which candidates provide written answers to questions. Our voter guide is currently available online at the website vote411.org, and it will be published in the Athens News. It's scheduled for September 29th, and the Athens Messenger is scheduled for October 2nd. The voter guide lists all races and issues that will appear on ballots in Athens County. The League of Women Voters is dedicated to expanding public awareness about government issues and encouraging active participation in government. The League does not support or oppose political parties or candidates. Despite our name, the League is not for women only, and we welcome participation and support from all people. Please visit us on our website athenscountyleagueofwomensvoters.org to learn more about our league or to become a member. If you appreciate our candidate forums and voter guides, please consider making a donation at our website to support all our local work. Thank you, and now I'll turn this event over to tonight's moderator, a fellow League member, John Howell.
Thank you, Adrian, and I'd like to welcome you all to this candidate's forum. So let me begin by explaining the forum procedures for our listeners. Each candidate knows about this in advance, but tonight's forum will include initially opening statements from each candidate, and then a question from each of the media representatives present. We thank Athens Messenger and Athens News for joining us tonight. Then there will be questions submitted by the public, and then finally, closing statements from each of the candidates. Candidates will have two minutes for their opening statements, two minutes for the closing statement, and a one and a half minutes to answer each question. And there will be no rebuttals. The order for speaking will rotate, and I will indicate who speaks first. The candidates can see our timekeeper, who will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining, 10 seconds remaining, and when their time has expired. If a candidate continues speaking, I will say thank you, and we will move on to the next speaker. Candidates are invited to share their qualifications and experience and to talk about their plans and proposals. Candidates have been asked to focus on topics relevant to the stated question and to avoid personal attacks and avoid raising issues that are unrelated to the office being sought. If they go outside these guidelines, I may stop them to remind them of these guidelines. All questions from the public were received ahead of time through the email address included in our advertising, and they were then reviewed by a League panel. The panel removed any questions that could not be answered by all of the candidates and were statements rather than questions or were duplicates of other questions. So I'll ask as many questions as time allows and ending at 20 after 8 to leave time for closing statements by the five candidates. So now we are ready to begin opening statements, and we will begin that with Micah McCary.
Good evening, and thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you all for taking the time to engage in this important conversation. My name is Micah McCary, and I am originally from Oberlin, Ohio, Lake Erie area and Lurien County specifically. I spent a lot of time in my high school days developing an appreciation for civic engagement through scouting, became an Eagle Scout, served on our school board for a couple of years, and already in that stage of life began to notice a theme of problematic or inadequate communication leading to struggles in organizations. So I actually went on to study communication interpersonally and organizationally at Ohio University. Started that undergraduate experience in 2003, and similarly, just got right involved with the civic engagement, joining our Athens Community Relations Commission, always wanting to cultivate a stronger sense of community between university and greater Athens, and just using my strengths in whatever ways I can to help others. Now I serve on our Racial Equity Coalition and am developing and increasing love for not only Athens but Athens County and all the wonderful things that we have under development, specifically our Athens 2040 Comprehensive Plan. It was really exciting to join City Council at a time when that was already in motion because I have skills not only in organizational communication, but my doctoral degree that I'm completing right now is in decision-making, and I love helping organizations make decisions that are consistent with values and objectives and really measure those, that progress. I'm actually really committed to measured progress, and one of my pet peeves is strategic plans that are just symbolic and sit on a shelf. So I am someone who likes to dig into what people really want to see and help them get engaged to the best of their ability, and I'm excited for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Micah. The next person who will speak will be Iris Virgie.
Hi, yeah, my name's Iris Virgie. I've lived in Athens for about six years now. I'm originally from rural Madison County. I graduated from Ohio University with a degree in urban planning and sustainability with a certificate in wealth and poverty. During that, I've interned with Franklin County Engineers and briefly with Franklin County zoning, but I'm still pretty young and new to the professional political realm. I've been bartending at this mine school saloon for, I think, around three years. And basically, I'm running as an independent with the goal of using my education and experience to give a voice to underrepresented communities in Athens and wanting to resolve issues of inequality in planning and policy between the university's role in planning and policy in Athens and the quality of life for the local community. And ultimately, not to serve as a traditional politician, but as a person trying to do what's right.
Okay, thank you very much, Iris. So next we'll go on to Ben Ziff.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for giving me a couple of minutes to introduce myself to all of you who I have not yet had the pleasure of meeting. I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum, as well as all of my fellow candidates for their attendance, and I'm sure spirited discussion to come. A little background on myself. I moved to Athens in 1998 when I was in fourth grade and have spent the majority of my life here. I attended Athens High School and then Ohio University. After leaving OU, I worked at Donkey Coffee as a barista before moving and working as a paramedic in both Zanesville and Columbus. My wife and I moved back to Athens in 2016, where I've worked as a barista and manager at Donkey Coffee ever since. I was appointed to City Council this past April and have been serving as an at-large representative ever since. Despite being on the younger side of the age bracket at 32, I bring a considerable amount of life and work experience with me to this position. Having worked as a paramedic in the back of a busy ambulance as well as an extremely busy emergency department, which saw nearly 90,000 patients a year, I've gained an appreciation for and understanding of making extremely consequential and difficult decisions while navigating the complex world of human emotions. As a Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu instructor, I've had the pleasure of helping instruct children and adults alike in the delicate art of self-confidence as well as standing up for what they believe in and themselves. Having been a manager at Donkey Coffee for several years, I've helped steer a local business towards financial success while maintaining a strong focus on social justice. Thank you very much for your time. I'm greatly looking forward to having the opportunity to work with everyone here to better serve the Athens community. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. And next, it's Damon Crane.
Hi, my name is Damon Crane. I use he/him pronouns. I've been a grassroots community organizer for 25 years, 15 of them here in Athens. My work has covered a wide range of social justice issues, including feminism, LGBT rights, labor rights, economic justice, anti-racism, civil liberties, anti-war, and environmental work. In just the past two years, I've successfully pushed council to pass its most pro-tenant legislation in decades. I've taken city officials to task over the broken promises of council's June 2020 racial equity resolution. I've co-founded the primary local organizations advocating for tenants and opposing racist policing. I've helped remove one racist officer from the Nelsonville Police Force. I've exposed the Hocking County Sheriff's ties to violent far-right insurrectionists. And returning to Athens, I've helped create our most diverse and representative council yet. Over the years, my work has been the subject of 250 news articles and 100 pieces of my own published writing. So I'm not the candidate who's gonna throw a bunch of empty buzzwords at you because I am the candidate with a consistent track record that you can verify. And tonight, I'm going to be very clear with you about where I think our city has gone wrong and how I intend to put it right if elected because I'm running for council to offer an alternative. Unlike our current council, I don't believe the answer to unaffordable housing is to build more expensive homes. I don't believe the answer to local poverty is to try to entice wealthier people to move here. I don't believe the answer to racial inequity is token gestures and broken promises. I don't believe democracy is well-served when council routinely breaks its own rules to rush through legislation without opportunity for public comment. And finally, with tens of thousands of OU students passing through our city every four to five years, I don't believe we should simply be sending them off into the world with a mountain of student debt and a collection of rental housing horror stories. Instead, I think we should be involving students in local politics while they're here so we can send them off with a knowledge of innovative progressive city policy and a well-practiced habit of participating in local governance. That's how our progressive community can equip thousands of young people every year to fight back against the far-right wherever they end up next.
Thank you, Damon. And finally, and for this opening statement, we'll hear from Sarah Grace.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this event and for all the work that they do to promote citizen engagement in our democracy. I also want to express my appreciation and gratitude to the City's Government Channel staff who have done so much to keep local government accessible to the public throughout this pandemic. And of course, thank you to everyone who is watching and engaging in this event. My name is Sarah Grace, and I currently serve as an at-large member of Athens City Council. I've been a resident of Athens for more than 20 years, serving as council member for nearly four of those years. I'm also the wellness coordinator for Hopewell Health, a small business owner. I have work experience in legislative research. I'm a mom of four young Athenians, and I have a master's degree in public health. In my day job at Hopewell, I work to support the wellness of both Hopewell patients and staff in nine different counties. In that role, I see daily the challenges that are faced by many individuals living in our region, but I am also witness to the incredible caring and support provided by the staff of Hopewell as well as many other healthcare providers and local agencies. Through the process, or though the process of my work on City Council is different, it's also done to support wellness for all members of our community. I know how important it is that council makes decisions that further the long-term health and sustainability of our city. Some of the specific actions that I have taken during my time on council include researching, drafting, and bringing forward the city's mask ordinance and the subsequent amendments. I've introduced a change to our city staffing ordinance to provide paid parental leave to employees in the event of a birth or adoption. I also brought forward resolutions in support of access to healthcare for women through support of Planned Parenthood and recognition of racism as a public health crisis. I am proud of the work that I've been able to do and of the progress that Athens has made in the support of health, accessibility, and sustainability.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you all. And now we will move to the question and answer portion of the forum, and candidates will have one and a half minutes to answer each question. And candidates, if you need a question repeated, please ask, and I'll be happy to do so. So let's begin the questioning with a question from Cole Behrens, reporter for the Athens News. So Cole, can you speak up?
John, Cole, and Alex from the Messenger and the News haven't shown up to the event yet, so you might want to move on to the public questions, and we can come back to them if they come into the Zoom meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will move on here, and we will start with this question then that came in from the public. And we'll begin this answering, let's see, we left off with Sarah, so we will start, and last time we started with Micah, so this time we'll start with Iris, be the first person to answer this question. Okay, here's the question. What specific policy would you push for to support tenants in Athens County if elected? For example, would you favor requiring as a rental precondition in Athens that the actual contact information of the owner be included in all contracts?
Thank you, John. So your example was, should the actual house owner be, contact information be available? Did I hear that right?
I think that's correct.
In terms of housing in Athens, there's a lot of issues that I'm sure that other candidates can speak even further to, but we have issues of the cost of housing in Athens is a struggle for many families, especially following, you know, the economic upset of the past year. And the quality of housing, in addition to that, is, I would say, in disrepair for many neighborhoods and families. I think a problem that we need to address first and foremost is the enforcement of code and making sure that landlords don't use that need for enforcement or maintaining or updating as a justification for raising rental prices more than they already are. Because that's, there's already families very much struggling with that, and specifically...
Okay, thank you, Iris. So next we'll go on to Ben, Ben Ziff.
Thank you, John. As far as specific policies that I'd like to push forward to help benefit tenants in the City of Athens, I couldn't list anything off the top of my head necessarily for a specific policy, like a piece of legislation I'd like to put into effect. But I do know that I've spent some time looking over the Athens Code ordinances. And I know one thing that I am a little curious about and that I'd like to look into more is the reasoning for when landlords are allowed to enter a renter's building, be it maintenance, and I've had some friends in the community who have unfortunately experienced people coming in to perform maintenance when there wasn't really much maintenance to do. It was essentially, in my mind, an unlawful entry. So I'd like to look into strengthening that. And would you mind repeating the last part of the question? I'm so sorry.
Right. For example, would you favor requiring as a rental precondition that the actual contact information of the owner be included in all contracts? I guess that means, so you can contact the owner if you have entered into a contract?
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, I would personally be in favor of that. I think if you own a property, you should, you know, be open about the fact that you own that property and not necessarily hide behind an ambiguous business name that doesn't actually relate to who you are at all as a person. I think if you own something, you have a responsibility to provide reasonable circumstances for its existence. And yeah, you should be available if people have questions or problems. That's your job. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ben. Okay, next, Damon, you're on.
Well, I would support that policy and a whole lot more. I guess kind of a good jumping off point would be that we all know if you've got an expired parking meter, the city doesn't give you two months to come up with a quarter before issuing you a fine. If APD pulls you over for speeding, the city doesn't give you two months to slow down before issuing you a ticket. Imagine if they did, there'd probably be a lot more parking and traffic violations. But if you're a landlord and code inspectors find safety violations at your rental property, our current city housing code does give you 60 days to correct those violations before there's any chance of you receiving a fine. And meanwhile, the city expects your tenants to continue paying you rent for the privilege of living in unsafe, substandard housing that the city knows is not up to code. I think that's ridiculous. We need much stronger housing code and much better enforcement. If elected to council, I'll introduce legislation to do exactly that. Specifically, I'll introduce legislation that doubles the number of rental housing inspectors and overhauls the inspection process, legislation that stops the city from continuing to issue rental permits to scofflaw landlords who consistently fail to keep their properties in compliance with the housing code. I'll introduce legislation that makes unauthorized entry by landlords in the tenants' homes, as Ben mentioned, and the wrongful withholding of tenant security deposits, violations of our city housing code. I'll introduce legislation that creates insulation weatherization requirements in rental housing in order to lower tenant utility bills, improve tenant comfort and public health, and shrink our city's carbon footprint all at the same time. I'll introduce legislation that ends the current practice of forcing tenants to pay to endure unsafe housing conditions for the 60 days after the city discovers code violations. A lot to do in that department.
Right. Okay, we go on to Sarah Grace.
Thank you. So I believe that the question stated tenants in Athens County. I just wanted to clarify that on City Council, of course, we would only have authority over properties within Athens city limits. I think one thing, in my experience in talking with a lot of tenants and learning about a lot of different issues within the city, one thing that is clear is there are many tenants who do not understand the full scope of their rights as tenants. And so the city has made different attempts to address this issue in the past, and I would be in favor of working to find a real solution to ensuring that tenants are aware of what their legal rights are as renters within the city. And I think that the more education and awareness there is about the rights that individuals already have in an existing system, the safer and better their experience will be because there are already laws in place that prohibit unlawful holding of security deposits, and renters need to know that that is the case. And we have laws prohibiting unlawful entry. And again, if renters know what their rights are, then it ensures that they're more able to stand up for their own rights in those situations.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, so the final response to this question will be Micah.
Thank you, and good evening again. I appreciate this question as a renter who's been in Athens for 18 years and who has known many students. I worked in housing and residence life at the university for more than a decade and have helped students transition into off-campus living and have served on the Student Legal Services Board at the university. And that body has done a lot to mitigate challenges and assist tenants with disputes between landlords. And I can say that there are three main areas that kind of all align with my main driving principle of wanting to see visible measured progress with anything that we're doing, from comprehensive planning to policies that support tenants. And that means that when tenants are having issues with the safety, the cleanliness, the sanitation of their property, that I would like landlords to be held accountable for, not just addressing the problem, but to be communicative. So I would certainly endorse anything that allows or facilitates greater communication between tenants and their landlords, but specifically to be able to say that we're not just working on it, but here is documentation of our effort perhaps provided to Athens Code Enforcement to show that we have sought the assistance of a plumber, that perhaps we're having a shortage. But I think communication is so important as opposed to leaving tenants wondering when they will see resolutions to their issues. So privacy is also important, and any policies that support that would be something I support as well.
Thank you, Micah. Okay, for the next question, we will turn to editor of the Athens Messenger, Alex Halvichuk. So I think she has a question that she would like you to address, and we will start with Ben. So Alex, go ahead and address your question, please.
Hi there, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. My biggest question is about transparency. So in the past, council agendas have been published online with little time to review them. Ordinances are normally only viewable after they've passed, and there's been an increase of suspension of rules in order to bring ordinances to vote sooner. This makes things a little bit more difficult for people who are unable to attend meetings or even some people in attendance to fully comprehend kind of what's going on. So I was wondering what changes each of you would put in place to make it easier for the layman to understand what's going on and for people to be able to be, for things to be more transparent and accessible for residents, basically.
Thank you for that question. That's an excellent question. So I have to admit, right out of the gate, I actually personally did not realize that people were unable to see any of the proposed ordinances until after they've been passed. I wasn't aware of that. I was under the impression that any of our documents that are, as someone who is on City Council, anything that we're able to see is essentially public record. So I would definitely like to see that published in full text beforehand so people are able to actually read it and grasp a full understanding of it without just having it pushed through. As far as an over-exuberance of suspending the rules, I personally voted against that very thing last night with the administration wanting to have the new Arts Parks and Recreation Director installed directly after some people in the community had voiced their opinion that they didn't feel that there had been enough time for people to get to know this candidate. I also agree with them and felt that we should go by the standard, you know, full duration of time. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Ben, thank you. So Damon, you're next in line to respond to Alex's question.
Yeah, I think if we want to fix this problem, we need to elect people to council who aren't ready to suspend the rules at the drop of a hat. As the Athens News reported today, council suspends its own rules to fast-track legislation with less time for public comment and media coverage at least 25% of the time. Now, Councilmember Reisner, when the discussion of the new Arts Parks and Rec Director came up at last night's council meeting, he said, wait a minute. There is no emergency that requires us to suspend the rules and fast-track this decision. And he's totally right. But that's the case in the vast majority of those 25% of the times that council does fast-track legislation and eliminate opportunities for public comment. A good example is the $91,000 Racial Equity Course, which was passed the minute it was proposed. You know, never mind two readings instead of three. You know, there was no opportunity for public discussion about that. And there were real questions to raise if we're concerned with measured progress about how that course is going to be directed at solving any specific problems and how its progress can be measured when the city's never conducted the racial equity review that it promised 15 months ago. So how is that course more effective than a PBS documentary that city employees could have watched for free? So yeah, we need people who are actually committed to a democratic, transparent process on council.
Thank you, Damon. Sarah, you're next.
Thank you for being here, Alex, and thank you for the question. And it's often challenging to know how best to reach members of the public. This agenda for every meeting is always published, at least the Friday before a Monday meeting, and the members of the public could, anything that, as Ben Ziff mentioned, anything that council has before us is public record. And so those documents are available. If there's an ordinance that someone is interested in viewing, those are available from the first introduction. And so, but often we find that even issues that we discuss at great length in different meetings, we're still not reaching everyone. And so then when an article appears in the paper, people often feel that it was rushed. And I honestly, this is something that has been a consistent struggle for our local government is knowing the best way to engage members of the public so that they are aware from the beginning. And I would say we appeal to members of the press to help us with publishing of announcements.
Thank you, Sarah. So next, we will have Mica responding to this question.
Thank you. I'll pick up where my colleague Sarah left off and say that I do think that relationships with media representatives are important. Think the work that they do helps promote transparency, and that's important. I think that we do want to make sure that draft agendas at minimum are available with as much advance notice to community members who might be interested in seeing what's coming up. And that's not too difficult, given that the tradition of having first, second, and third readings will at least give us an idea of what's coming up at a future meeting. And we can finalize that draft agenda for the public as soon as possible. I think it's important for me to ask clarifying questions that I might not be hearing asked from anyone who's in attendance at the meetings, even if they're things that I have an understanding of. I like to ask questions that will, for the record, clarify the purpose, intent, and concerns associated with any decisions. And I do think that it is important to understand the responsibility council members have to respond to emergent issues. Like I'm a member of our city safety services committee, and I take concerns that administrators bring forth about the dangers of a fire station in need of repair very seriously. And I really want to do as much as I can to help people who've not been engaged in these political processes to come into the fold and reach them through social media, news outlets, or whatever we can do.
Thank you, Mica. And finally, to comment on this one is Iris. You're muted, Iris. You're muted. Can you unmute yourself?
I'm so sorry. I'm gonna try to be quick. I think the issue is not necessarily how this issue needs to be approached, but the fact that it just needs actual genuine effort put into it. I think it would not be hard to reach those people who are often left out of the conversation. I think if it's not a matter of like genuine disconnect, then there's a chance that those people are being left out because of the concern they might have for the policies that are presented and how it might put them at a disadvantage. Another thing that goes into that is it's not just that those table meetings and, I mean, meetings and ordinances and stuff should be available, but they need to be publicized and accessible to all types of communities in Athens. One major thing I've noticed is language. The use of professional jargon is inaccessible to a lot of communities who've struggled with education and accessibility. And that altogether contributes to building disillusionment with local politics in general. And that's why it's important for there to be genuine, honest, loyal representatives who want to speak for those people if the issue of transparency is not addressed.
Thank you, Iris. So we will now go on to the next question. And for this one, we will, let's see, Ben, you started this one, so we'll start with Damon on this one. And here's the question. There were several questions that were submitted by Athenians about allowing short-term rentals. So like Airbnb's in R1 neighborhoods. So what is your opinion on allowing these short-term rentals?
Well, the city can't adequately enforce its current housing code within current rental units. So I think we need to get that under control before we start adding more and different types of rental units to the city. There's a lot of questions to be asked about Airbnb. Some folks argue that this can be a way for folks to afford to buy their own homes if somebody's also renting out an extra bedroom. But I am a little skeptical and wonder if that's being oversold. It really depends on how this is regulated, whether we see Airbnb's as an opportunity for homeowners to make supplemental income by renting out part of the home in which they reside, or whether this is just something existing major landlords are able to capitalize on. So there's a lot to look at, but you know, if we can't even enforce the housing code we have in the rental properties we already have, we've got to get that under control before we start adding new types of rental properties.
Good. Thank you, Damon. Next, Sarah.
Thank you. So this has certainly come up a few times as sort of a hot-button issue. And I think that there surely is a way for Athens to find a middle ground that is workable. There are certainly individuals in some neighborhoods who do not want short-term rentals in their neighborhood. And there are many individuals in the town who have reached out to council and asked specifically for guidance on short-term rentals because they do want to use it by either renting out a room in their home or taking the opportunity to rent out their whole home for busy weekends in Athens. You know, there are a few known weekends that lodging is very full. And this is a way that many people have thought they would like to earn some additional income. And currently, as long as someone is renting out their home for very short periods of time, they do not require a rental permit. And there are current short-term rentals operating. So what council needs to do and what has been partially undertaken in coordination with the planning commission is come up with a workable solution so that we can track those and also ensure that the city and county are collecting the transient guest tax on those to support our tourism industry.
Thank you, Sarah. We'll go on to Mica.
Thank you. Yes, I will echo the importance of recognizing any economic opportunities for the city of Athens. And I appreciate that that is an important part of this equation to balance alongside concerns about what other challenges this could present for our code enforcement office or unexpected sort of challenges. So for me, as someone who really cares about quality decision-making processes and helping people feel like they understand the issues, I think learning sessions, educational sessions about how such issues have been tackled in similar cities across the nation are important for citizens to be able to participate in, ask questions about. And when we hear concerns, I want to see them documented, and I want to see the facts or resources that address those concerns attached to those concerns so that people feel informed. You know, we have a great league of women voters who have put together a voter's guide for these candidates who are participating on this call right now. And I believe that when we have these big hot topic button, hot button issues that we need to do, make a similar effort to make sure people have clear access to a lot of otherwise conflicting information. And whatever we can do to promote that engagement is something I'll be supportive of.
Thank you. Thank you, Mica. Okay, and Iris.
So I think there definitely is some potential for some positives on this topic, but I genuinely am concerned with some of the negatives that haven't been fully discussed yet. Mainly that, well, first of all, like this type of housing could contribute to the housing cost when investors will flip houses in neighborhoods. And that contributes to increased property values. And it also brings about the issue of increased discrimination or that kind of activity in neighborhoods where people from outside Athens might be unfamiliar with the neighborhood and raise concerns. My biggest concern is that investors could very well come from beyond Athens and take advantage of evictions and foreclosures, which have been especially prominent in the past year. But that's a pretty predatory thing to do. And they would be taking that profit outside of the Athens economy rather than cycling it back through while leaving other families homeless and struggling to find affordable housing.
Thank you, Iris. And Ben?
Thank you, John. I think there's definitely potential for things like Airbnb in Athens and, I would say, especially in Athens County. I have concerns, some of which are similar to ones that Damon voiced. With already the code office being, you know, working at its absolute peak, trying to keep up with the number of rentals that we have now, adding on a whole bunch of potential additional ones could be a bit overwhelming for the four of them who are working, you know, as best they can. I do think, I had never thought of the idea of an Airbnb being a way for someone to actually afford to purchase a home where they would rent out part of it. And obviously, I mean, I guess, you know, people buy houses and they rent out, you know, the downstairs or whatever. But I never really thought about Airbnb as being part of that. So I think that's, to me, that's a potential big positive. If anything that allows people who wouldn't ordinarily be able to afford to buy a home, to be able to buy a home, I think it's great. Yeah, that's where I'm at.
Okay, thanks, Ben. We'll go on now to the next question. And this question, then, we'll start with Sarah, who will be the first person to respond to this question. And the question is, what would you propose to improve local policing in the city of Athens?
I think that one of the most effective tools in improving policing is improved relationship and communication between members of the community and members of the police force. Those open dialogues, the opportunities to build relationships, to understand where members of the community are coming from, and also what the police instructions are or what their perceived identities and roles are. And so I think it is something that has been really challenging during the past 20 months. There used to be a few different annual events to bring members of the community and members of our local law enforcement agencies together in just a casual setting. Those have been canceled due to the pandemic. So I would like to see, as soon as we safely can, more opportunities for just open engagement and dialogue and ride-alongs, honestly. That's something that several people have told me that they found really, really informative and was a good way of building trust both directions was just getting to know each side in the equation.
Thank you, Sarah. Next, Mica.
Thank you. This is a topic that's really important to me. I appreciate the comment about how ride-alongs can be really informative for folks. And I hope that those kinds of programs and other relationship-building opportunities continue. It helps people hear stories that otherwise aren't told. We know that we have a culture that emphasizes negativity bias, whether it's just reporting more on problems than on victories and successes. But when we do have knowledge of officers who've gone above and beyond with demonstrating empathy or relationship-building skills that perhaps are otherwise underemphasized in their performance, I think it's really important to get those stories out there. And I know that that's not the number one priority of our Athens Police Department, nor do we have as strong of a marketing and communications resource for our city. But it's a reoccurring theme I've seen that even the frequently asked questions about Athens Police Department procedures, that those documents and resources, they exist and need to be better shared. I would only add that the report, reporting out on the trainings that Athens Police Department and other city staff members are doing is really important. We did make a significant investiture of resources for training, and it can't be a one-and-done. We know from research that implicit bias in the long run isn't handled just in a one-and-done. So these have to be ongoing conversations where we hear what's being learned, how we're growing, and we are committing to continual improvement.
Thank you, Mica. Iris?
I think that part of the issue that's being addressed would involve the topic of the racial sensitivity trainings. And I think that the problem being that ineffective or aggressive intervention has roots that extend beyond racial prejudice as a blatant concept, being like lack of accountability and discipline for unacceptable behavior, unchecked authority exacerbated by a culture of fraternized protection. Unfortunately, an example of that would be, as in county-wide, Jimmy Childs. I think the structural issue that is possibly most within the reach is the distribution of resources and labor, considering that the police budget and authority spans a wide range of criminal and emergency events. And they end up overly equipped for the potential of violence and dangerously under-equipped for compassionate de-escalation. So I think the same strategies to address those issues, including problems of addiction or substance abuse, mental or behavioral emergencies, homelessness, or even just interpersonal conflicts, I think is developing other sectors of emergency response services specialized in different types of intervention, which would relieve the burden on police of switching gears to approach different situations, but it would also improve the health and safety of the people struggling with those other situations.
Thank you, Iris. So we'll go on to Ben.
Thank you, John. So I think that communication between the public and the police department is one extremely important step. And there is some, of course, but I think there's always room for lots of improvement in most things, and this included. For me personally, I think as far as better policing, I think that also means a potential change in our training methods with police officers. I think we need to focus way more on de-escalation. I know here in the city of Athens, we have the CIT training. But as from just from a personal standpoint, when I worked as a paramedic, I was often the first person on scene dealing with people who were going through extraordinarily challenging mental health crises. There were sometimes weapons involved, there was violence involved. And the only tool that I had in my tool belt, you know, I didn't have a taser, I didn't have a baton, I certainly didn't have a gun. The only tool I had was de-escalation and then as gentle as possible, physical restraintment when necessary. So I think pushing hugely into that style of training with a much larger emphasis on, while I do think, you know, if you carry a gun, you need to know how to use it, obviously. But at the same time, I think if you're going to be out on patrol, it is significantly more likely that you're going to be having a physical confrontation with someone, and you need to be able to handle it in a gentle, non-destructive way. And I think that kind of training is essential to help improve policing.
Thank you, Ben. Damon?
So last summer, we had the largest protest in our nation's history. Subject of them was racist police violence and a lack of police accountability. I think that's a pretty big deal when the result of that is the largest protest in our nation's history. So do we have those problems locally? Well, we don't know because the city won't investigate. You know, I'm a founding member of Athens County Cop Watch. Last summer, we looked at five years of APD records and found that the Athens Police Department uses force against black people at 2.6 times the rate it uses force against white people, while also subjecting black people disproportionately to arrests in traffic stops. City officials denied all of our findings, but they still refused to conduct their own investigation. So, you know, how do we improve local policing? I think we start by having an open, honest, transparent investigation. And if it uncovers any problems, we get to work fixing them. It's not rocket science. I think that's what we need to do to improve local policing.
Thank you, Damon. So we will go on to the next question, and Micah, you will start. So the question is this. The Planning Commission is currently considering an ordinance to modify parking regulations in the city. What is your position on this proposed ordinance? What do you see as its strengths and weaknesses?
Thank you. Parking has been an important issue in Athens for quite some time. Even my past experience working in housing residence life at Ohio University exposed me to the reality that students were essentially not able to have cars on campus their first and second years, forcing folks to move to off-street, off-campus parking, which then can create conflicts for those who are in those residential neighborhoods and might not have adequate driveway space. So I believe we have to think about what we want holistically in terms of everyone's needs being met, adequate parking opportunities for those who live on campus or near campus, as well as those who need to have spaces protected near their homes. I believe that as much as we can do to look at other models for parking, recognizing that there are some constraints in terms of like where we can put things, but whatever we can do to help protect the ease of parking for folks like me who do live in a residential neighborhood off-campus and sometimes can find it difficult to find a spot when you have a lot of visitors in town. Hasn't happened as much recently, but I think it's important that we make sure everyone's needs are met.
Thank you, Micah. So we'll go on to Iris.
Right, so I recall reading in one of the articles regarding this subject that they presented it as a transit-oriented model, which is a topic used in urban planning. It is a progressive planning model. I think that's misleading. If you are not putting a massive amount of attention and resources simultaneously into bus taxi systems, building, fixing, maintaining pedestrian walkways, improving pedestrian transit accessibility, safety, streetlights, bus stops, then all of that is more or less meaningless in terms of the transit-oriented model. In addition, I don't think that we can base the city's transportation infrastructure around the perceived habits of students. They can and often do have vehicles which they pay a fee to park in places that residents are not allowed to park. And meanwhile, there tend to be more, in general, physically able families, have less needs for certain amenities as residents. And to view this as an issue that's exclusive to local residents is to ignore the population that is coming from rural areas to live and work, I mean, not live, but work and shop and have fun in Athens. And to, it would greatly inconvenience them and insult them.
Thank you, Iris. We'll go on to Ben.
Thank you, John. I think as anyone who's lived in Athens for realistically any period of time, parking is, I'm going to go out on a limb and say the hot-button topic of this town for the past however many years I can recall. It's challenging, for sure, being able to find a way to accommodate everybody's needs while trying to move Athens towards a more eco-focused sort of progressive future, focusing more on, and I understand, you know, people want to have more bikes and walking, and that's great. But I do think that some of the problems with this specific ordinance are the possibility of places that people are renting to live in not having an actual parking space within 1,500 feet of their house. And some people can have said like, well, you know, that's what, a quarter, a third, or whatever of a mile? Yeah, it is. And I know that I don't want to carry all of my groceries a quarter of a mile to my house in the rain. So while I think it's important that we do overhaul our parking and all of that around here, we need to be really careful with how we do it. And we need to not rush into something that might end up really inconveniencing a lot of people. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Ben. So we'll go on to Damon.
Yeah, I tend to agree with the concerns that Iris and Ben have raised. You know, the folks I see pushing for this change are all homeowners with off-street parking, and they've got several vehicles in their driveway. And sure, they might walk and bike everywhere around town, but they've still got at least one vehicle in the driveway in case they need it for emergencies or for trips outside of town. So why do we want to deprive low-income renters of having those same options? Is it because we want to make it easier to convert more single-family homes into rental properties by relaxing the off-street parking requirements? Well, if we do that, then the more we convert these homes into rental properties, the more we price would-be single-family home buyers outside of city limits. And given that the city is home to the county's largest employer, how do we think they're going to get to work? They're going to need to drive. No more walking or biking to work. Also, there's this idea that if we make it harder to find a parking spot, students won't bring cars anymore. I mean, students are still partly attached to where they were living before they moved here to go to school. Of course, they're going to want to have a car to travel there and for emergencies and for every other reason that we have cars. I mean, until we see a massive expansion of public transportation at the county, state, and national level, students are going to bring cars. We're just going to make life harder for them. And, you know, I want to shrink the city's carbon footprint. I think the way we do that is by replacing the 24-hour parking rule with a sensible neighborhood parking permit system so that people without off-street parking aren't required to start up their cars and hunt for a new spot every day, and we get rid of all those unnecessary emissions and other things, too.
Okay. Thank you, Damon. And finally, Sarah.
Thank you, John. So when we consider parking regulations and requirements for the city of Athens, which is quite frequently on city council and as residents of the city of Athens, parking definitely comes with a lot. But when we're talking about the regulations, it's really important that we keep in mind not only what we see every day right now, but what we want to see. That's why we have a comprehensive plan, this Athens 2040. And we're not talking about what we want to have happen only right now, but also what we're working for, what we're striving towards. And from all the information gathered during that project, which our city planner put a lot of effort into reaching people in all different communities and ensuring that there were a lot of voices engaged and a lot of participation in developing our comprehensive plan. We want a greener, more walkable, bikeable city. And that means we need to focus our regulations on space for people and for those activities and less on requiring space for cars. And I think that the process is working, and I have faith in the process. Our city planner and council member Paul put a lot of work into a proposal, and now the Planning Commission is reviewing it, and will send back recommendations to council. And I look forward to seeing their recommendations next month.
Thank you, Sarah. So we will now move on to another question. And Iris, you will be the first one to respond to this question. The question is a bit of a long one. In the summer of 2020, council passed legislation mandating a racial equity review in the city. Recently, council allocated $91,000 for racial equity training without taking bids or proposals. Should the city conduct a review before training? And should the city have taken proposals for comparative purposes from other organizations that provide racial equity training?
Thank you, John. That was a very long one. I think that my answer to this relates to my answer to the question about police reform. I don't, gosh, there's a lot of parts of that question to answer. Ultimately, I don't think that, I think it's very important that the council seems to be taking that matter seriously, and they should be proud of that. But I don't think that racial sensitivity trainings are an adequate way to approach those topics, or at least not a sufficient way, because you can't learn to resolve those behaviors by watching or by being in a class or something like that. And that's why I mentioned earlier that I think that part of resolving those issues would involve developing alternative emergency response services. But ultimately, I, yes, they should be reviewed, and yes, that should be taken into consideration. I'll stop now.
Okay, thanks, Iris. We'll go on to Ben.
Thanks, John. I think that, this is such a big question to unpack. My goodness, I'm grateful that Iris went first, not me. I think that this racial equity training has potential to have a real impact. I think it definitely does. I think all of us, myself, I would say, you know, 95% of people, if not more in the world, have some small racist behaviors and tendencies that they aren't necessarily even aware of. I think that, you know, there's the things that you know that you know, and there's the things that you don't know that you don't know, and those are the tricky ones. So I think this can provide an opportunity for people to potentially have those tendencies or what have you revealed to them in a safe classroom environment where they can hopefully have an actual moment of growth, which is the point. That would be ideal for people to actually grow from that. I would hope they would. But I do think there should be, definitely should be, some kind of survey before the training actually takes place. And I wasn't on council back in 2020, but I would definitely like us to try and make something of that nature happen before this actual training takes place. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Damon?
I think to put the training in context, it's important to review the timeline. So back in June 2020, council member Grace authored a racial equity resolution that council unanimously passed. It called for a racial equity review of city operations and for new attention to be paid to racial equity in matters of city governance. But then the review was never conducted. And six months later, everyone on council, including council member Grace, voted to approve new three-year police union contracts that were virtually unchanged from previous years, not informed by any racial equity review, and with no new attention paid to racial equity. Then in January, Mayor Patterson announced he was making good on the resolution by investigating private property deeds for potentially racist language, as though that's what had killed George Floyd and Breonna Taylor. Not surprisingly, a lot of folks weren't too impressed by the mayor's attempted bait and switch there. So in early August, after more than 13 months of inaction on Grace's resolution, and with Grace's reelection campaign looming, Grace suddenly introduced a proposal to spend $91,000 on a racial equity training course for all city employees, and council voted to suspend its own rules and immediately passed that proposal without any opportunity for public comment. Now, I'm in favor of racial equity training, but the problem is, without ever conducting the promised racial equity review, there is no way to direct the course towards solving any problems and no way to measure its effectiveness, which makes the course no more useful than a PBS documentary we could have had city employees watch for free. So what's my position? Council needs to make good on the promises of its racial equity resolution from 15 months ago. We need to conduct the racial equity review.
Thank you, Damon. We'll go on to Sarah.
Thank you, John. So first of all, there's a lot of misunderstanding about what this contract with the National League of Cities' racial equity and leadership program involves. Because the very first thing that the city is receiving through this program is a racial equity review of our city employees. There's, this is something that was recommended to the city through the Racial Equity Coalition. And the city has been working with that coalition consistently to plan our path forward. And the first thing that they ask that we provide for city employees is some form of questionnaire or survey to assess where individuals within the city's employ are, what our level of understanding is of systemic racism and racial justice issues. Because what has been said here tonight is correct. We can't go forward effectively with training unless we first know where we are. And so that is the first step in this program that the city has contracted to begin through the National League of Cities. It is ideal for a city because it is designed specifically for municipalities. It's designed to enable local leaders to understand where there might be inequities built into our city code, built into the structure of property, of transportation. And so it is the right step forward for the city.
Thank you, Sarah. And the final statement on this question will be in the hands of Micah.
Thank you. It's a very important topic, one that's very important to me as someone who's spent a dozen years of his life overseeing and supporting equity and inclusion initiatives, being part of the Racial Equity Coalition of Athens County, and being proud to have been appointed to city council at a time when our mayor's efforts and the efforts of other council members have resulted in specific action. Because diversity, inclusion, equity, social justice, these are not problems that are fixed overnight. They're nuanced, and if it was as easy as just picking the right program or critiquing the wrong program, then we would probably have resolved a lot of the issues that we are here in this time encountering. So what I think we need to appreciate is that this is not a one-and-done. It's a multi-modular experience that's spread out over time, that's equipping us with not only expert consultants to facilitate community dialogues, but are encouraging us to utilize our existing community resources like that Racial Equity Coalition to inform the questions that are on the assessments that will allow us to make measured progress. So I believe that it's not just about critiquing what is here and saying why it won't work, but leveraging as many resources as possible to ensure that the citizens and the administrators who are going through this process are getting as much out of it over the long run as possible, and then looking at those larger systemic parallels of how the individual actions, behaviors impact the larger issues of racism.
Thank you, Micah. So we will go on to the next question. The next question is a shorter question. This question says, "In your opinion, what are reasons for and against continuing to permit the use of electric scooters within the city of Athens?" So Ben, you're on.
That is much shorter. Yeah. They ask specifically reasons for and against. Is that what they said?
Yeah, reasons for and against continuing to permit.
Well, I think a good reason for it is that it provides a very green, very accessible mode of communication, of communication, transportation. For a lot of people, I see tons of people riding around on these little scooters, zooming hither and thither and getting to places much faster than if they're walking and much greener than if they were driving. I know a downside of it has been seeing some of these scooters go down sidewalks or the whatnot, and, you know, perhaps going the wrong way through traffic, which is slightly distressing when you're driving along and suddenly there's a scooter in front of you going the wrong way. So I can see why that would be a reason to not have it, but overall, I mean, I think they're pretty great. I don't know. I've got a real soft spot for sort of adorable forms of transportation like that. Just these great little orange scooters, they just zoom around. I love it. Here we go. That was much easier.
Okay, Damon, it's your turn.
I mean, honestly, this hasn't been a big issue of mine. I think there are so many more important concerns that we need to address in the city. But if we want to have alternative forms of transportation that reduce vehicle emissions, that's great. And if e-scooters can be part of it, that's great. I think one way that they could be more useful is if we did a better job enforcing the housing code to make sure that sidewalks could be navigated by these scooters safely.
So, you know, at this point, I don't have much more to say than that. I mean, they're fine. I don't have a strong opinion one way or another on the scooters.
Okay. Sarah, what's your opinion on scooters?
Well, I really like Ben's opinion because he's just so happy. And I tend to agree for the most part. They are fun. They are a green form of transport that is quite accessible to many members of the Athens population. We have statistically a young population here, and so that is a good thing. In order for the business to operate in the city, the business did have to sign a contract and pay a fee. And so there was a bit of revenue for the city. And so that is a plus from the perspective of the city. And as far as a downside, I know that when scooters are left in a sidewalk or blocking a driveway, I find it to be bothersome and slightly annoying, but not really a big problem. But for an individual who is perhaps in a wheelchair or has some other mobility challenge or even like a mom with a baby in a stroller or different things like that, they could be a significant burden to work around. And so I would be in favor of more encouragement to the management of the scooter companies that they are more promptly collected and also just reminders to users to be mindful of our community in that way. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Micah, scooters.
Thank you. Yeah, I won't have a ton more to add, but I do believe that in any situation like this, it's a cost-benefit analysis. And I know that many of the benefits are environmental in this case. And I know that there are some limitations to their utility in Athens, given how hilly we are. And also, just as has been mentioned, the need to do more sidewalk repair to make scooters even more useful. I don't know that we've had many traffic accidents related to scooter use, but I do agree that they can be a hindrance to people with mobility challenges and that they can be unsightly and that personally, I'm not in favor of seeing them kind of just thrown about the city. So I think that anytime you're making a decision about this, you're looking at, oh, what are the specific gains financially and otherwise that people are experiencing? And do they outweigh the costs?
Thanks, Micah. Iris.
So this is something that I'm kind of passionate about, and I'm going to go against the grain here and irritate a lot of the listeners and including my fiance. Because he loves them. I think they're a little bit less green than they appear to be. I mean, certainly it's an alternative to cars. It's an alternative to taking the bus, mostly because the bus system is a little bit lacking. But they are, they do present a danger to both vehicles and those with mobility struggles, absolutely. I don't know if, I mean, I know that I personally don't experience that. But this is like a worldwide issue that comes up a lot that many people who have mobility limitations are very, very concerned about because it's laying in their one and only way to get through. Considering also that our sidewalks are poorly maintained, that's an additional issue. The other thing being like skateboards are not allowed on sidewalks. So they also require smartphones and, am I wrong, bank accounts to use, I'm pretty sure, which is kind of a class disparity because not everybody has that. And I think it's taking the focus and concern away from maintaining and improving other transportation mediums.
Thank you, Iris. So it's drawing close to 20 after. So I don't think we're going to have time to do another round of another question. We have a couple more questions here that we can't get to, but we want to make sure that you have the time available for your final statements. So I think we'll transition to that at this time. And for this process, we will begin with Damon.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is this time for closing statements now?
It is time for closing statements. That's right.
Okay. Well, I don't have anything in particular to wrap up, except there was one issue that I had hoped to talk about that I didn't get a chance to, which is the University Estates TIF deal, where the city is, through tax breaks, publicly subsidizing the building of quarter-million-dollar homes that are more expensive than the current median home sale price in the city. Why on earth is the city doing that? Well, city planner Loeb told council back in February that were it not for this subsidy, the homes in question would sell for more like $400,000. So the city is subsidizing this development to help people who can afford quarter-million-dollar homes actually get $400,000 homes at nearly half price. And the deals proponents say this will entice wealthier people to move here. So it's a classic gentrification scheme. The council member Grace, as chair of council's Affordable Housing Commission, and council member Fall, as another commission member, mislabeled an affordable housing initiative. The ordinance approving the deal literally calls it, and I quote, "an affordable housing development." That's page two. And Grayson Fall spoke of it as an affordable housing initiative over and over again for more than a year until February, when council member Claude Felder was quoted in the Athens News saying that if they continued to talk about it that way, they would, quote, "get laughed out of the room." So the new cover story became that this was about providing sustainable housing despite the carbon costs of new construction and that it was about providing housing accessible to people with disabilities despite the homes in question being two-story townhomes. And then proponents of the deal even used the short-lived lumber price bubble earlier this year to get council to let the developer charge even more for the homes, $20,000 more apiece. A month later, the bubble burst, lumber prices fell below the previous year's level, and construction hasn't even started yet, but the developer has an even sweeter deal and homes are even less affordable. So I think that this is a huge issue for the city because I think everything about the project was an absolute deception. It's just been a giveaway to the developer, to wealthy home buyers, and a textbook gentrification scheme, literally the opposite of an affordable housing initiative. And I think our city should be moving in another direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Damon. Okay, we'll move on for the closing statement of Sarah Grace.
I was bound to forget the unmute button at one point tonight, so thank you. And there were a lot of misstatements that Damon just made in his closing statement. If anyone has questions about the UE TIF, I am more than happy to discuss that. But I want to focus on other issues in my closing statement. First of all, I want to thank the League for all their work in presenting these forums. And I want to thank everyone else for participating and the viewers for watching. In my opening, I mentioned the importance of local agencies that support health and well-being in our community. And I would like to take a moment now to encourage everyone to vote in favor of three renewal levies that are on the ballot in addition to this council race. These are all renewals. They're not new taxes. One is for operation and maintenance of emergency medical services. The second is for support of senior citizen services and facilities. And the third is supplementing the general fund of the Athens Hocking Benton Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services District, which is the 317 board. All of these are critical services for our community, and I would urge everyone to support the renewal levies for those services. Collaboration in communities is key, whether we have public-private partnerships or public-public partnerships coming together, working together to support one another is how we move forward. And with that, I want to thank my family. They have been a huge support, my husband and my kids, through campaigns, and I could not do this without them. Early voting begins on October 5th. Election Day is November 2nd. And I love the people and the energy of Athens. It is a wonderful place, and it has been my honor to serve. I promise to keep working to make it even better. So right now, I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We'll turn to Micah for your closing statement. Be sure to unmute.
Yeah, I'll extend that. Thank you to everyone who's been involved with the organizing of this event and also to those who are taking the time to send in questions and just to hear and participate and just be engaged. Because Athens has such amazing traits culturally, artistically, intellectually. We are doing things amazing in a recreational sense. We have this Athens 2040 plan that I don't think people even know enough about, even though we had hundreds of folks contribute. I would like to see that increase. So I am someone who has mentioned, has great interest and passion for seeing meaningful, comprehensive, and strategic plans come to fruition in ways that communicate progress in visible ways. And I recognize that when we are doing the important work of city council, it's often not about right and wrong, but it's about understanding different perspectives and helping people understand rationales that led to decisions and then hearing their concerns that have been not addressed and finding creative solutions to address them. So it's rarely as simple as any kind of 90-second soundbite, but I do believe that this work is calling for me, and it's not just about me. It's about those who will come after me, including the increased diversity that we want to see on Athens City Council. Because I know from my own lived intersectional experience as a gay black man who's gotten engaged to his white partner and living in southeast Ohio, there are ways for us all to thrive. And when we look at the opportunities to uplift those who are most marginalized, we improve things for everyone. So I want to thank everyone who's going to vote and who's going to be engaged and who's going to continue to make Athens the best city it can be.
Thank you, Micah. So we'll move on to Iris for your closing statement.
I guess all I can really say is, of course, thank you for the Women's League of Voters for setting this up and putting forth the labor and initiative and providing us with this platform. I am surprised to see myself here, and I am so appreciative of the opportunity. We have a lot of, I think, really promising candidates. I think we, many of whom genuinely will do wonderful things for the community, and I wish them the best. And I hope that the viewers here and who I very much thank for listening feel more motivated to feel comfortable approaching us or approaching certain topics and feel comfortable participating in the election. Thank you all.
Thank you, Iris. And we have one more for a closing statement. And that's the man with the last name that starts with Z, so that's easy to pronounce.
It's all right, John. I'm pretty used to it. I've been last in everything, every time anything's alphabetically sorted my whole life, except for there was a Zimmerman after me in high school. So take that, Zimmerman. But here I am at the end. Lucky me, I get to close it out. This was really fun. This was really enjoyable. I really appreciate everybody for tuning in. I really appreciate everybody for being a part of this, all the candidates, everybody, you know, the League of Women Voters that have worked to make this forum happen. I've never done anything like this before, a candidate forum, and this has been genuinely really enjoyable. I've been so nervous about this for the past two weeks, and this has been an absolute pleasure. So I wanted to thank everybody again for making this happen. What to say really as a closing statement? I love Athens. It sounds so cheesy and cliched, but there it is. I love this town. It's been really, really good to me for the past, gosh, 24 years. Getting older, 32 older, I guess. But I love it here. This is just, I view this as an opportunity for me to try and give back a little bit to the town that has given me so much. I met my wife here. I found the best job I've ever had here. Most of my friends I've met here. I love it. I'm going to stop talking because I'm a bit of a crier, as people who know me know. And I'm not about to get all teary-eyed on public access. So thank you again for tuning in, everybody. This has been really great. I appreciate everyone.
Well, thank you all to the candidates, and it's my privilege to bring this to, well, it's my job to bring it to a close. It's too bad we couldn't talk longer, but this is our assigned time. So I'd like to thank all of the candidates for your participation in this democratic process. And I hope other people will follow up with the kind of questions that have been raised here so that there can be additional conversation and exploration of these issues. Voters, remember that you can vote for up to three at-large candidates, three of these folks, okay? Not just one, but three. I would also like to extend an enormous thank you to the City of Athens Government Channel and Ryan Schwartzoff in particular for partnering with us. They've provided the Zoom technology, the recording, and the distribution of the forum across multiple platforms and the technological expertise to make it all happen. This recording will be viewable on the City of Athens YouTube channel and its Facebook page. It will be viewable on the League of Women Voters of Athens County Facebook page and will be replayed on the government channel, channel 1024. And finally, I want to thank the people of Athens County for submitting so many thoughtful questions and for tuning in to learn more about these candidates. We urge all of you to make a voting plan now. Register to vote by October 4th, and then you can start the next day, October 5th, with early in-person voting. And Election Day is November 2nd, so don't wait beyond then.